Hey, family. We're waiting to get in the room. Come on in the room, family. We talking about determination tonight. What are you determined to see through? Flashing off my fairs. Okay, I'm coming. Eating some blackberries, family. Wait for y'all to get up in here. I'm gonna start at, what song did it take one minute, so? I start at about, about three or four minutes in and I'm gonna get started. Cause if you missed it, you can catch it afterwards. This is shadow work sessions, right? Every Wednesday at 6:30, family, I do shadow work sessions like clockwork. Never fails. So, I'm eating some blackberries, family. I ain't gonna get it in. Okay. Okay. I'm getting ready to get started. Cause I'm almost three minutes in. And I don't want those that come in after I make the video to have a delay. Too long, right? But I try to let the people stroll in that normally stroll in the room late, right? Come on in, okay? But um, today we're talking about determination, family, right? What are you determined to see through, right? This range true for me, right? Um, and I felt that a lot of people probably wanted and needed this reminder to tap in with thyself, right? About being determined, being focused, um, setting goals, setting our intentions, right? And that's definitely how this shadow work session came about. Me working through being focused, getting back on track, um, being determined, right? And that plays a huge part in all of our lives in reference to things that we truly um, need to be determined, right? And so then that brings up the question, what are you determined to see through? What are you determined to see through? What are you definitely determined to see through, right? What is your goals? What are your intentions? What is something that you want to be focused on and you're determined to get done, right? What is that task? What is it? You know, have you started on it? You know, these are the questions you should be asking yourself. Cause sometimes we get sidetracked, all these distractions and things that are within the collective at this time, family. We have to be determined to see things through. Okay? And so that brings me to putting up um, the definition here of what is determination, right? So let me put this down. So what is determination? Determination is purposing to accomplish right goals at the right time regardless of the opposition. Because you're gonna have many challenges, you're gonna have many oppositions that come up against you. Um, negative forces play a huge part in reference to the collective right now, family. Um, a lot, like I said, the distractions is one, right? So you have to be determined, right? Through the opposition, through the adversity, throughout the chaos that's going on in the world. You must still have something that you feel that you need to accomplish, okay? Even if that's just prayer, right? But being determined actually starts you from that aspect of things, right? Being determined, being determined is actually, you know, what we would say here, right? The, your determination is as strong as your challenges you overcome. So if you don't, if you don't, if you're not determined, if you're not steady focused on a purpose, then you're not gonna be able to conquer those challenges, you see? Hey, Melissa. YouTube is doing too much. They always doing too much, you know? They always doing too much. It doesn't, it does not um, shock me, okay? So I'm talking about determination. Um, I just went over one definition in reference of the, the definition of determination. It's many um, perceptions and perceptive in reference of what is your determination. It's your purpose to accomplish the right goals in the right time and regardless of the opposition, regardless of your challenges, right? Determination is as strong as the challenges you overcome. So what is it that you want to overcome? Because the first question of tonight was, what are you determined to see through? I want you to write that down in reference of your shadow work and ask yourself that, journal that to yourself. Determination, right? Um, I'm gonna go through some of my notes that I have in reference of determination. This comes about in reference of me getting that determined to take care of some things in my life. Me getting that focused, me getting back on track. And sometimes we get distracted, family. So we have to turn to ourselves and get ourselves back on track. Cause some, sometimes other people um, play a part in that distraction, right? So determination, a quality that makes you continue trying, right? Or achieve something that is difficult, okay? Because sometimes it's hard to be determined when you've been through rejection, when you've been something that you may feel that you failed at, right? It's the act of finding out or calculating something, right? Maybe when you say, when we say calculating, we're mainly like being strategic, planning, right? So finding out some things is for you to be determined because that's you setting your intentions. The art of officially deciding on something. See, that's a big part of determination. You had to first get your mind right, right? And you have to decide. And deciding sometimes is the main issue, right? Making a decision. Because sometimes you're just scared to make the decision of determination because of past experiences, you know? Past situations that may have not went your way. And then it makes you feel flawed in your decision making. So then that can change your determination, right? So it's officially acting on something, right? That you are, have decided on. A lot of times when you determine, it's like, I'm gonna do this, I have decided it, you know what I mean? It's like, nobody can't turn you back, you know? And so it is. But that's a decision that you have to make. And with that, it comes acknowledgement, accountability, right? Determination. And the act of deciding determinately, I mean, um, definitely and firmly also are the results of the act of making a decision. Because that's what truly determination is, family, is making the decision. Some of us have a hard time making the decision what color drawers to put on, okay? So you know you're gonna have a hard time being determined about something that you feel is, is, is um, not attainable, right? But everything is attainable once you put your mind to it. See, we can do all things with the strength that we have and the power that we have within. Hey, family, I knew y'all would start strolling in here later on, right? But it's okay, you can go back on the things that you missed. Um, so the act of decision in determination, right? It's about that fixed intention. I love that, that's why I wrote that down. Fixed intentions. When something is fixed, it's, it's anchored, right? That means it's fixed there, it's, it's solid, it's foundation in that decision. And in that act of making that decision of being determined, right? So sometimes we have to have these reminders, family. We have to have the reminders to get back on, get back focused, get back determined. Hey, family, I see y'all coming in the room, right? And get back into the groove of things, right? Because we have to have, we have to be determined, family. And when we're determined, that fixed intentions that I was talking about is to achieve a desired end, right? A desired task, a desired goal. What are you, what are, you know, what are you determined to see through? Well, I'm just, I'm determined to see through an exam that I have to take, right? For a certification, I'm determined, right? But it's been very hard to get back on that, that ride of studying and getting back focused, right? But the determination is a set goal, right? To set that goal. We're gonna talk about some things um, on what's gonna get us back focused and what we need to do to set our eyes on the prize, okay? But, but still enjoying the process, okay? So we have to definitely keep um, we have to definitely keep ourself up, right? Keep our vibrations high. Cause if your vibrations are low, it's gonna be very hard for you to be determined and focused on something, family. Because you're, you're vibrating low, you know, your senses are off. You're allowing your externals to affect your internal, which is gonna affect your mind. It's gonna affect everything, your body and your soul, right? So determined, right? Determination, what are you determined on? And some of you in the chat, let me know, what is, what are you determined to see through right now? You know, these are the things that I want you to, and I want you to write this down. This should be something that you journal through. This is your takeaway from shadow work sessions tonight, okay? What are you determined to see through? All right, through any challenges, what is it that you want to overcome? And what is the goal, right? And so I'm gonna give you some things that's gonna help you to get through this process, right? First, first, right? Is to define your purpose. What, why are you, why are you moving into this intention, right? What is your purpose? My purpose is because I want to get that recertified, I want to get back to working in this specific engineering position, right? That's my purpose. And that also goes along with setting SMART goals, right? I know some of you may have heard of SMART goals before, right? SMART goals is, it's an acronym. But it's definitely just goals in reference of you being able to obtain them, right? And not set them too high, right? I mean, we always say set your standards high, yes, but be realistic, okay? That's what I'm saying. Don't say, yeah, going back to school, okay? Well, that's a good, that's a good goal, right there, going back to school. Especially for us that have been out of school for years. That's the same like with me. Um, I held like seven, eight certifications at one time, you know what I'm saying? Cause I was, I've been an engineer for over 15 years now. So I've held many of certifications. But that was in my twenties and in my thirties, I'm in my forties now. It's like, the older you get, the harder that information is to uh, retain. Although I am considered a senior, you know, engineer at this time. But they don't look at it that way when it comes to the contractual world. They want to look at it in reference of what type of certification do you have for this, you know? Although I know how to do the job like the back of my hand. So these are the things, I'm just showing, I'm giving myself as an example, okay? So I understand the school thing, I understand the um, I understand that maybe even, you know, you said working on, okay, I wanna do medical assistant and work in the lab drawing blood. Okay, so that's a um, phlebotomist, that's a phlebotomist, the ones that take the blood, right? Yeah, okay, that's a good goal, right there, I love that. Go on, girl, okay? Yes, a phlebotomist and a lab tech, okay, yes, yes. So these are the things. So now, you know, you have to set them, you, you already know what you wanna do, your, that's, that's your purpose, right? That's your, that's your goal that you wanna attain. So now, you have to practice self-discipline, right? How you gonna get there? You know, have you wrote down things that, you know, not even like the items that you may need? Like, okay, yeah, I'm gonna need money, I'm gonna need tuition, I'm gonna need the books, right? That's all the physical, but first it starts with you. See, that's a part of the determination. Are you physically focused on it? Do you have all the distractions in your life pinpointed down where you can actually start eliminating those distractions? You know? For example, with me, I know that I have to make myself, right, study. So I have to get to my best, I have to make time, set an hour, right? I'm saying, you know what I'm saying? Like, this is the time, at 12 o'clock, this is when I'm gonna be studying. This is how many chapters I'm gonna study, I got my whiteboard, you know? So these are the things, get your tools together. That's our self-discipline, and self-discipline is hard. You know what I mean? So I'm not saying none of this is easy, you know? But it's once again based off of your determination. How determined are you to work through these things, you know? And some of us make a lot of excuses, you know? So we have to stop making excuses and that's a part of that self-discipline, okay? And remember, self-discipline is another form of self-love, okay? Let's go back to that, cause you know, we've talked about these things many, many times. But we have to remember in our mind, self-discipline is another part of self-love. If you have self-discipline, then that's another form of you showing yourself love. Because you're able to exert, right? Positive energy towards yourself, which is what? Putting yourself in the right alignment. So don't, I, yeah, I see all y'all in the chat saying, dis, discipline is my struggle. Yes, it is, yes, it's real struggle, it is, you know what I'm saying? It is, family, I know, trust me, I'm right there with you, you know what I'm saying? But with time and determination, that's why we're talking about determination tonight, you know? I know discipline is a struggle, I know. Okay, what you say, I'm working on it, first thing stops, right? Get focused, look around, the first of the year, but see, you already starting. You see what I'm saying? So I'm proud of you. At least you're, you know exactly what it is that you have to do. You gotta, and you gotta go. See, that's, that's, that's determination. And you already stopped one thing, so it's just like a list to keep going to the next, right? Check it off and pat yourself on the back, take yourself out for a drink or whatever you wanna do to congratulate yourself on the small goals. Because like we've been saying in the chat and all of y'all, and I agree as well, it's not easy. It's not easy, okay? But we have to be accountable, that's the next thing. Keep yourself accountable, family, okay? So um, it comes here, right? So you see this screen here that I have up, right? Okay, one month, click, go, girl. Okay, I'm a year and six months, so I'm, I'm cheering you on as well, okay? And continue to cheer me on, cause I know it's hard, okay? But um, determination, family, right? So you see my screen that's here, I have determination in the middle because that is the main goal, right? So the first thing first I said was for us to define our purpose by setting our SMART goals or by setting our goals, okay? And if you look around here, you can see goals is right up there beside willpower, right? We are to have willpower to be able to, to understand that we have the power to move towards our goals. We have this purpose here, but you see determination sits in the middle. But it's all about that focus and moving forward. That's why the arrow is moving forward, family, all these arrows, okay? Now the next thing is to keep yourself accountable, family, keep yourself accountable. And when we say that, what do we mean? That's why I'm telling you guys that, get, you know, you, you all know I always go back to the journals, right? Because the journals is the main thing that helps us be accountable by writing things down, family. I know a lot of people nowadays, they don't write. Cause we got computers and stuff that do that for us. But I'm old school with it, so I like to write stuff down, I keep me a notepad, I keep me a journal. These are the things that keep me accountable as well as um, it helps me to remember. I'm getting old, so it helps me to be able to remember these things as well. Yeah, you've been writing lately, that's good, congratulations, Eldra, you moved forward, honey. See what I'm saying? And you know what? That willpower and you setting them goals and you already, this is, this is for you, determination. You are definitely determined, I can tell by just the things you're saying in the chat that you're determined to meet your goals, you're determined to take the task and you have a fixed intention. You know what I'm saying? And at this point, to achieve your desire and all the things that you desire, you are putting in the work, which is wonderful, right? So, um, you, you keeping yourself accountable, that's amazing. Yeah, you can do it, definitely, yeah, you got this, exactly, okay? Give her that love, family, right? So the next thing I want you guys to think about is your frame of your mindset around failure, okay? Cause see, this I must bring up after the keep yourself accountable part. You know why? Because sometimes we get off task, right? Cause I know I'm like that, even with working out, right? Um, and I'm using that as another example of determination as well. Being determined to get back to working out for some of us, right? We were just talking about that in the chat the other day, right? And so being able to get back on task, because that's another part of us reframing our mindset at the failure or overcoming the failure of getting tossed off, you know, um, of not working out the same time or not even doing it for like a week or two and then trying to overcome it. But then we were so determined, it's kinda like, you know what? It makes me feel like it goes back to that time at the first of the year where everybody goes to get a gym membership, right? At the first of the year, everybody determined to lose the weight, you know what I'm saying? Like that every year, all the gyms be packed, everybody gonna start on January 1st. We gonna get in there, we determined, we gonna do it. And then by February 1st, ain't nobody in there. These are the things, right? So we gotta be determined and we can't be down on ourself because just cause you didn't make it back to the gym on February 1st, don't be down on yourself. Just take that as, okay, I fell off, okay? I know that's, I'm not a failure, but I'mma start again, you know what I'm saying? It's about starting again to get to the goal, you know? Look, Ebony told me, I've been saying that for years. Right, but that's the, that's the example, you know what I'm saying? People be doing that all the time, I know, cause me and my friends always talk about that. But I know too, because I be trying to work out too on my little treadmill sometimes or I going, you know, I've been wanting to go back to the gym over here in my complex, but child, please. I'll be, I'll be thinking about getting on that stairmaster, but I did not be in here making my smoothies, cooking. Look, you told me I got free membership and still having with me too. So family, I brought that example for you guys to kinda, you know, get a good laugh on that because we all are like that, you know? That's just being human, you know? And we have to not look at that as failure. We have to look at that as just us getting off task, right? To get right back on. But that also brings me to my next point of having a supportive network, having a support system. Sometimes we need that support system, like we're a support system for each other here, you know? Within our little small Patreonian um, family here, right? And so you have to have that. Because like you guys encouraging Eldra in the chat, you guys telling, you know, you, we in here encouraging each other. Melissa, you know, Ebony, all of us in here encouraging each other, right? That's our supportive network. And that also helps towards determination. Because determination is all about perseverance, family, being able to get, if you get off, get back on. Stay in focus, right? Improving, right? It's about improvement, right? And building your self-confidence and self-belief, you know? Cause with determination and being focused and you start seeing results, oh, that's kinda like the gym thing again. Where you start going consistently and you see some results, oh, it's gonna start being something that's gonna, you know, make you wanna keep going and going and going and then your, your determination is gonna turn into you meeting that goal. Because just like Nike, you just did, you know what I'm saying? So it's about adapting to change as well, family. And they say, change happens after being consistent for 21 days, right? So for 21 days, you sacrificing something of your living conditions in your home life for 21 days, okay? That changes, it's something about the, the, um, they said the 21 days that makes a repeated cycle or repeated event or repeated um, action, okay? Be set, you know what I'm saying? And no longer would, is just you just doing something, it's a routine at that point. So keep that in your mind too, you might wanna jot that down. If you can get through 21 days, you know what I'm saying? It's a repeated, it's a, it becomes a routine at that point, right? So it's about adapting to change, it's about transforming those challenges into something that looks like you're able to obtain it. Because sometimes when the challenge seems too hard, we also get in our mind that we're gonna fail it anyway. But you can't think like that, you have to break it down into small segments. Sometimes you gotta break it down into chunks, like just say, okay, you wanna get back on to going back to workout, right? Do 30 minutes, you know what I'm saying? Cut 30 minutes out of your time, if you can't do 30, then do 15, you know what I'm saying? So just, it's about breaking it down and whatever resonates with you in reference of not feeling like you failed at it. Also having that support group and making realistic goals, okay? So this brings us to the next thing that I wanna say, to define your ambition by making realistic goals. Don't put yourself up there and say, I'mma go and do a whole hour in the gym and you ain't been in two or three months. Then you ain't gonna make it and then you ain't gonna go back. Okay? So you gotta be, you gotta be realistic, okay, family? You gotta be realistic, okay? So just like what you were saying, Eldra, it's been a month. Good, but be realistic, you know what I'm saying? Y'all laughing in the chat. I'm just saying, you gotta be realistic with yourself because, trust me, I'm a living example of being determined and being all hype about something and then in the next few weeks, I'm off of it. You know what I'm saying? I'm kinda like that. So I have to get myself, I have to break myself down to certain aspects of, okay, I'mma do 30 minutes of this. I'mma do an hour of this, so to kinda like mix it up so I can stay on task with everything. Cause I'm, I'm a good multitasker, you know what I'm saying? But sometimes multitasking in real life can take you off of certain things where it's not completely done all the time. So don't be that multitasker that has a million things going on and then don't complete everything, you know what I'm saying? So I'm trying to get to the point where I complete one task, then do another one like that, okay? Yeah, watch your company because they don't want you to move forward, that's true too. That's true too, that's a word right there, that's a word right there. Let me put that up on the screen for you, okay? Thank you, Eldra, that's right. Watch your company, yes, the people, that's why it's, it's best for you to pick a good support system. Not somebody who is um, trying to hinder you from reaching your goal. So be very careful, that's good, that's discernment, right? That's discernment. Cause you gonna feel what is right and what's not right or who's not right, right? Mm-hmm, you gonna know, your intuition gonna tell you. That's when that, your intuition gonna kick in, so you gotta listen to your intuition. Okay? Okay, Sandy, we see you, girl. Okay, so at the realistic goals, family, towards the um, determination with those realistic goals, you must be consistent, okay? And constant, okay? Um, with, with what you are determined to get done. Consistency wins the race. Consistency wins the race when you're consistently practicing something as well. So let's say, you know, it is the, the workout thing. You gotta be consistent. And let's say you wanna get back to like, like how um Eldra said in the chat, she was going back to school. That's being consistent. You gotta make sure you go to class. You gotta make sure you read. You gotta make sure you doing your schoolwork. You gotta be consistent, you know what I'm saying? But you can't be consistent unless you're determined to get it done, right? So family, we gotta pay attention to these things. We gotta make sure that we are putting in the act of the decision of being determined, okay? A fixed intention to achieve our desired goals, family, okay? Now, allow yourself to rest and recharge, okay? Through the determination, in the steps that I wrote down about what I wanted to talk to you guys about determination about, make sure you rest and recharge. Because if you not rested and recharging yourself, family, you not gonna be any good, not even for yourself to be able to get through the task or to get to the goal. Let's say you stay up all night and you ain't been doing what you supposed to do. How you gonna be some good to do your schoolwork? Or how you gonna be some good to do, you know, your workout, you know? How you gonna be to, how, how are you gonna make it through? You have to stay rested and recharge, okay? You have to. So yeah, focus and balance, right? You have to, and that's another part of that, you know? Um, hey, Melinda, I see you family strolling in here. So make sure you recharging yourself, okay? Make sure y'all recharging. Because some, sometimes I hear people say, I'm determined to do this, I'm determined to do that. And they be like, I stayed up all night doing this. And then the next thing you know, they, they don't, they don't make it to the next goal because you so tired from doing the first goal. Cause you overdid it. Don't overdo it, family. Rest, okay? Have ambition, but, and be realistic, okay? Don't wear yourself out. It's kind of like you doing everything for the race and then you get to the finish line and you, you can't even make it to the end of the finish line cause you so tired from, you know, jamming back there, you know what I'm saying? So keep your mind right with that too, okay? Next thing I have is set challenges for yourself. Now this one I like because this also plays a part in reference of the deadlines, right? So set challenges for yourself in reference of your determination to reach your goals, family. What do I mean by that? Well, setting challenges is I'm going to see how I can do, I'mma do 30 minutes this week in reference of working out. We just using that example, right? So I'm saying, um, I'mma work out for 30 minutes this week, but next week I'mma work out for 45. You know what I'm saying? Like give yourself that. You see how I'm giving myself a certain timeframe, but it's also a challenge because I know I gotta get through this week of 30 minutes. But I know next week I'mma challenge myself for 45. Now, the whole thing of it is, it goes back to those same things that I told you earlier. Even if you're unable to get to that 45, family, don't look at that as a failure. You just have to reframe, get back in the groove of things, do another week of 30. You know what I'm saying? Until you can get to that, um, to the next step. But if you wanna challenge yourself, that's even better. You know what I'm saying? Cause I, I like to do that. I like to challenge myself within the situation because this will also show you how determined you are to, to get to the next goal or to the get to accomplish the goal rather, okay? So this is about consistency. This is about a firm, fixed intention, okay? This is about purpose and willpower, everything you see on the screen here, right? Courage, right? But the main aspect in the middle is why it comes about is what are you determined to see through? What are you determined to see through? This is your shadow work question of, of the day, okay? I want you guys to sit on this message of this week. Cause you know, sometimes we get distracted and we don't, we get off task, family. You must focus. You must stay focused, you must stay, you must stay in alignment, right? Raise your vibrations and do things that make you be able to be focused and to make um informed decisions, right? So that goes to the next thing of, like I said, making sure you meet your deadlines as well. Make that a challenge, you know? Maybe this week is you wanna study for five hours and you don't meet three of them until the first half of the week. Well, you know, you got another two to do. So you better get your mind right, get determined and get the next two hours done so you can meet your goal of five hours of study this week. These are the things, break it down, maybe one hour a day. However, it resonates with you. But we, we have to set our intentions to meet these things, to be determined, right? Okay? So this also goes back to developing a positive mindset, family. Now, if you don't have a positive mindset around whatever this task or whatever this goal or whatever this is that you are trying to accomplish, how in the hell do you feel like you gonna be able to get to it if you don't have a positive mindset about it? If you feel dragged about it? If you feel like it's something that you're pressured to do? It's not, you're not gonna be determined to do it. I'mma just tell you that right now. You're not. Excuse me, and I could tell you from experience, I don't like to be pressured. And I know no one else does either. And sometimes pressure busts pipes, you know, just straight up. But sometimes pressure in certain cases, like, um, I mean, I keep using the workout thing cause I think that's a really good um example. But you don't want no uh drill sergeant over you screaming at you, right? While you trying to begin working out again. You know, that's, that's, that's stressful, right? And that's not gonna give you a positive mindset to come back and do it again tomorrow, okay? So these are the out, external things that I want you to think about before putting yourself in a predicament or a situation that's gonna take you off of having a positive mindset about whatever you want to be determined to handle or to reach the goal or, you know? So just be careful, like how Eldra was saying in the track chat too about watch your surroundings and watch who you're around and watch who you put in your external vibrations and stuff like that because it can affect your determination. If you got somebody constantly complaining around you, that's not gonna help your positive mindset to be determined about whatever it is that you're trying to accomplish. So it's about you using discernment and intuition as well. So that's where the spirituality comes about within this being determined, you know, and being focused. So you must use that, right? You must, you, you must use your, your, your intuition and your discernment, family. And you must have a positive mindset and know that, um, right, I need motivation. Right? Motivation is different than pressure. Now, I like somebody to, to motivate me. Yes, you got to go, go to do what you gotta do. You know, you want, you need that extra oof, right? Like my best friend, she's good about motivating me. She's good about motivating me. She be like, no, kid, you know, you gotta do this, you know, you gotta do that. You know what I'm saying? So that's motivation for me because it's like, you know what? You right, I gotta do this. This is something that I put my mind to. This is something I'm determined about doing. And sometimes you need that extra voice, you need that extra push to kind of just give you that push into, you know, whatever it is. But you don't need to be pushed down. You know what I'm saying? You don't need to be pushed down, you know what I'm saying? Cause you don't wanna, you don't even wanna do yourself like that. So don't take it from somebody else. You know what I'm saying? Yes, but don't drill me. Right, that's what I'm saying. We don't like that. Most people don't, you know what I'm saying? Women, men, whoever, you know? So that's the gist of your determination, family. And last but not least is to stay focused through your determination and success comes with that, right? Um, the last thing I have here is between the impossible and the possible lies the person's determination. And that is so true. It might be, my picture got cut off at the top, family, but this person is leaping over to from one, um, from one mountain to the other. But in between is the impossible and the possible. So it's like you being determined to get whatever it is or to do whatever you wanna do. This only you holding you back from that. You have to set that intent. You have to be fixed about whatever it is that you wanna do and know it's gonna be done. You know what I'm saying? This also goes back to faith. And it also goes back to knowing your power and knowing your worth and knowing everything is possible, right? Because as it says here, between the impossible and the possible lies your determination. So what are you determined to see through? What are you determined to see through, family? What Melissa say? I think I need to make a schedule with alarms. I'm going to do this tonight. Yes. Yes, now look at that. That's one thing in reference of being determined of holding yourself accountable of your scheduling and the things that you want to make sure that you're at. That's another part of accountability. Remember I said that in reference of determination. You're determined to make it to your, your events, your classes um on time. And how are you doing that? You're keeping yourself accountable by making you an alarm, you making your schedule, you know? Putting it in your phone. I do that a lot. I put it in my phone. Um, I set my alarm, you know? So these are the things we have to do. Put it in your phone. Or if you don't have a phone, write it down like Melissa said, you know? But I, I know a majority of you have phones with the calendar. So it's time for you to take accountability for that. Um, just like y'all know, I'm here every um Wednesday at 6:30 for shadow work session. Put that in your phone, right? Thursday night insight, every Thursday at 6:30. It doesn't change unless I'm absent, unless I tell y'all it's canceled for that night. But outside of that, I normally am trying to be here, you know? So yes, hold yourself accountable, family, okay? But not only for your events on socials, but also for your events around whatever you need to do. If you need to study, if you need to, you know, work on some work stuff, put that in your phone, hold yourself accountable. And that's a part of that self-discipline. See, self-discipline comes with accountability, you see? And we're only accountable um for the things that we do, you know what I'm saying? So no one else can force you. It's all about you. That's why I always tell you guys and it always goes back to that shadow work video that I had up on my page. And it was a clip and it said, can't nobody do your shadow work but you. And that comes back to exactly what we have here, right? So we must do it. Yeah, determination is key. Yes, it is, Sandy. It is key, determination, okay? Yes, I have a 6:00 AM alarm for prayer and gratitude time. Yes, and I have my um meditation time set in my phone too, Melissa. Yep, I have my meditation time set in my phone. And I have, I have a few alarms in my phone. A few alarms, yeah. Because that's the way I feel like I keep myself accountable. You have to do it, family. You have to. So try those techniques. Some of you may have not been doing that. Maybe that's something that'll help you, you know? Another thing that's come out of shadow work sessions for you guys to hold yourself accountable for your time, time management. That goes back to time management, right? We learn that a lot around our jobs and things like that, even in school, right? Time management. Time management goes a long way in reference of the 24-hour day, right? So get your mindset together, okay? Just get your supportive group or you be that supportive group for someone else if you feel that somebody else needs to be determined about something. Maybe reiterate these same goals and things that I'm telling you about to them. A lot of times, you know, we have younger kids that need to know about how to be more determined and what aspect of breaking it down and then go through the things that I say, you know, to, you know, setting your eye on the prize, the main thing, you know? Practice self-discipline, go through being accountable, right? Set your mind frame and mindset up, right? Not to be thinking about failure and all of those things. And if you do fail or you feel like you failed at something, jump back on the horse and get back started again. Cause all it is, is just about you just doing it, being consistent, you see? So these are the things, family, and be realistic. Don't set yourself up for failure, okay? Cause a lot of times we do that and then we're down on ourselves about something that really wasn't realistic in the first place, okay? And make sure you rest and recharge. That was one of the other things I had on the list, rest and recharge. That is a big one, family. You must get your rest, okay? Um, it take, yeah, when I think about that, I, you know, it was like the song back in the nineties with Nas, that was a lie. When he was like, I rest when I'm dead. Uh-uh, I don't, you gonna be dead cause you ain't rest. Okay? That was an old hip-hop song that he said that. That was a lie. You supposed to get your rest, okay? So I really appreciate you doing this. It helps me think things through. Much respect, much respect to you, sis. And that's why I do it, right? For us to get through the things that are happening in our current lives, you know? These are the things that I'm going through, family. And I'm gonna end with, cause this was my last slide to give you the, um, to give you the last quote, which is between, you know, the impossible and possible lies your, your determination. But also I wanna give y'all the Psalms to read to get you back focused when it comes to, cause you know, I always gotta spin it with spirituality, right? Um, to keep you focused when it comes to your determination and using a Psalms verse to read um when you get this way, okay? Um, when problems overwhelm you, okay? Um, you can light a pink candle and repeat the Psalms until your emotions are calmed down and your mind is clear. And then you'll be able to find a way towards a solution to the trials which beset you for as verse 14 says, "The Lord is my strength and song and is become my salvation." And that is from Psalms 118, family. Psalms 118, okay? Verse 14. And you can read the rest, but that Psalms is when problems are overwhelming. Also to destroy um, you know, the demonic forces towards you when it's coming to your mind and things. And it's also that verse is um to silence the unbelievers. That verse is to silence the unbelievers. And it's when problems are overwhelming to you and to destroy the dark forces against you when you're trying to be determined and you're trying to reach a goal. So Psalms 18, it's many verses in Psalms 18, but I do know the main one is 14 in reference of overcoming problems and to silence unbelievers is 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. So I normally just read the whole 118, which is 29 verses in it, okay? So that's definitely what I wanted you guys to know um about determination. I wanted to give you some Psalms um verses on it. And I wanted to just make sure and encourage you and, and, and give you some breakdown in reference of being determined, okay? About whatever you wanna reach, it is possible, all right? So much love tonight, family. We're gonna end it out right here, right before the hour. Um, I love you guys. I appreciate you for being here tonight. Much love to all of you who made it into the chat tonight. And if you missed it and you watching the replay, that's okay too. Just get the message, all right? Um, let me write in here. So for the people who don't make it, um, you'll know it's Psalms 118. That is the Psalms, all right? All right, family. I love you guys. Peace, peace, peace. I will see you soon, tomorrow for Thursday night insight. Y'all come with y'all insight, which y'all want messages about if you have specific questions. And if not, we'll just be getting into whatever, you know? If you have specific questions. And if not, we'll just be getting into whatever, you know, you you want a message from the ancestors, all right? All right, family. Much love. Be determined, all right? Peace.